Good evening, everyone. Have your attention please. I'd like to call to order the special meeting for the Board of Selectmen. Today's Tuesday, February 25th. It's now 7:00 PM.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special board finance meeting in order. Please rise as you can.
Please leave.
On the next seat there. Then she will be taking her first chance on occasion under the influence of that.
It's really great to see a lot of people out here tonight. So we have a couple of small housekeeping things to do. And then we're going to start with the Chief of Police and then Superintendent will come up. Okay, so Andy Williams.
First up, do we have any correspondence? Say none. Next up, we have a consideration for approval of special meeting minutes from 2/18/25. Do you have your agenda as well? Okay, so that's a joint item. With that, I will move that we approve the special meeting minutes, February 18th, 2025. All in favor?
Do we have a second or our side?
I have a second.
And all in favor?
Let's direct each other, Nels.
Outstanding.
We're done.
So we have one more for the Board of Selectmen. I move that we approve the special joint meeting minutes from February 18th.
Yes, because you had a special meeting before.
Oh, before, yeah, thank you. We did have a special meeting at 6:00 PM. So I move that we approve the special joint meeting minutes from February 18th, 2025. All favor? Aye. Motion carries. One last thing, we have a resolution. You know, basically background knowledge, you want to look at the background.
Yes, yes. So this concerns the project, High School at HVA C Project at the high school. And we have a number of contracts in place now for a mechanical engineer, commissioning agent, and so forth. Those resolutions all authorize for selectmen to sign the contract and act on change orders or other things that are incidental to the contract. We do have some good ones that are coming up here and there that are small dollar items that is within the project budget are either coming as a contingency or in a payment matter of under $2,000. And the problem that we're running up in this very part schedule is that if we wait for the board, pardon me, if we wait for the public site and go in commission to take action, that's tomorrow night, your meeting tonight, and we have to wait for another Board of Selectmen for approval. So we're looking for authorization for these small items. Again, outside of those other contracts we have that have already been authorized and change order authorizations already in place. So that we don't delay the process and have to wait for a meeting to be held to authorize these smaller items. So the motion would be to authorize for selectmen to take action and to sign these items as they come up. And they would have to then be approved by public site. They'd have to be within the project budget and reasonably necessary for the completion of the project. Any questions?
So many questions. Okay, with that, I move that in connection with the HVA C project to authorize genuinely hardened act on and execute on behalf of the town a new or revised proposal, contract, or change order, and related documentation as applicable as recommended by the public site and building commissions that is within the project budget and reasonably necessary for the completion of the project. Any further discussion? All favors, aye? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And we get over business.
So the first thing on our agenda, I'm sorry, for the presentations is the Chief of Police. Steve, Chief Wagner. Everybody doesn't know who Chief Wagner is, this is the Chief of Police. And we have Captain Heather Burns. And I believe Tony Rubino is the Chairman of the Police Commission. Welcome, everybody.
Just so everybody knows, because we have a fantastic group here tonight. We did have a brawl over this. These guys are going to go somewhat quickly. We appreciate your patience. We just wanted to knock off the police department parts before we move on.
I think the chief was not feeling well that night, is that correct? And you're much better now? Excellent, thank you.
Okay, good evening. Anthony Rubino, the Chairperson of the Police Commission. And here is standing with Chief Steve Wagner and Captain Heather Burns. Who present the commission here. The proposed 2025, 2026 budget for the local police department. The local police commission fully supports this budget today, as you this evening. I will now, I'll give you the role to Chief Wagner to answer this question. If you have a part of a question. All right, I first want to thank all these people who work for this.
Thank you. Well, seriously, because I was ill last week and I apologize. I took a little bit of airtime before your presentation. We'll make it as quick as possible and as concise as possible. So with that being said, I'll start to the board. Going through the police project, I know you have the same paperwork in front of you that I have. So the first line item obviously is one of the bigger ones, salaries. What is indicated in that salary line? If you go down to the notes section, the budget details, is all the officers paying, including SROs, three SROs in this school, dispatcher pay, police overtime, dispatch overtime, the special police officers, and all the other things that go along with that down below. One of the biggest asks and the increases in this budget is for every police officer. Two years ago, we presented and asked for two officers. I know there's a couple of new members on the board. And yes, well, sort of kind of the plan was gone forward was to get one officer that year and then skip a year and get the officer that other year. And that's where we're at. That's where we're asking for that other officer. The other increases in salaries are just overtime. And that's just due to what we've been spending for overtime. There's increases in patrol overtime and dispatcher overtime, also slight increase in training. A lot of the training is mandated by the states. We have no choice but that. So I know that that's a big area, so I'm sure there might be a question or two. So if anybody has any questions on that area? Okay, that was easy. The next item is office expenses. You see there's just slight increased office expenses. And that's just because the price of items has increased. And another thing that within that office expense, just real quick, is we added, the police commission added $1,500 for community awareness. There was no line item for that prior, like community events, like the different types of com functions. There was no line item to hand out goodies to people and children and coloring books and things like that. We do have some money in donation accounts that cover some of that. But we were really lacking some money to do some community outreach stuff. So that got added into the office. Diego, is there any questions about that?
Okay. Equipment and supplies, there's no increases, the same as last year. Along with the next line item, communication, same thing, no increase than last year. The K-9 unit, there is a slightly increase in attendance to medical and, you know, bed expenses and dog. That's the expense right there. Everything's increasing, the dog knows how to bed and go to the street, it's crazy.
Interesting question.
Sure.
Because you have that included in office supplies.
No, it's a difference. This is K-9, like in K-9 units, like the dogs that the police department owns.
Yeah, pardon me.
The one in office expenses is for the animal control. Basically, there is a slight increase. We haven't had any increase in that unit in a long time. And the reason why is we finally actually have a decent amount of officers staff wise. So we're able to utilize the bike control unit a little bit more. And that's a little bit more work in care of bikes. And we were able to add another officer to that unit, so we can use uniforms and that class. So any questions on those categories? Moving on to armory operations. There's a huge increase, but a lot of that came from other categories. So with the range being up and running, you need to maintain the range. You need to maintain the filter, the air circulation system. I believe there was $3,500 in, I want to say, can't remember where it was. But it was in another account that seemed more applicable, put it on to armory operations. So there was a decrease one place, but a bigger increase to armory operations.
Nice question. It's having a range in that your department, is overtime come down at all? Over time? Meaning overtime for training, instead of driving out to South Berry, you're driving wherever you are.
Yeah, yeah, it has a little bit. We have, we did, some of our qualifications inside there, like the rifle qualification, and we'd have to call, we'd have to move her, you have to load up the van, you know, pay officers, that's third.
No, there is.
And when the training's outside the town, we also have to pay them for lunch as well, when they're in town, we don't. So little things like that, it has saved some money. One of the first things we did in there was what they call low light shooting, you know, shooting in the dark. Light splashing, something that we haven't been able to do for years, very beneficial. So, thank you. Yep. Training and education is the next big category. There is a little bit of increase because the training always increases. The state provided all kinds of free training years ago. They don't provide any, barely any free training anymore, but we have to pay for training now. There's also the expense for recruiting. So when we, there's a website called policeapp.com. And we do all our hiring through. It used to be free of charge. The way we got that is because anybody taking the tests or flying through the department, we have to pay the fee. The problem is, is that the numbers are so down, the people wanting to be police officers, that the company couldn't sustain itself. So now they have to charge police departments to use it. That's $1,500 a year, it's a new thing. I'm saying questions about that category. Professional services, very minimal increase, see there. Clothing allowance is contractual, so whatever the increase is, is because of contractual obligations. And now the, one of the biggest categories of malls, contracting services. I would like to point out, the biggest increase in contracting services is because of regular Caesar contracts. It was originally in last year's operating budget. It got pulled out. I know, can't remember if we took it from CNR or if we took it from one of the two.
Last year was CNR.
So now we have, now it's in the operating budget. So it looks like a huge increase, but it's something we already had last year. And also, within that is an increase in software licensing. Not many of you know, we actually got hacked last year with this computer system. So one of the suggestions from IT people was to get this new software. And part of that software is to have 24-hour coverage. So when our system is hacked, a live person will be notified immediately and be able to defend their system while it's down. And that's a big thing, because we're liable because of all the state systems that we're tied into, like the collect system, the NCIC, which is all your criminal record checks, license checks. And we have an obligation to make that secure. So therefore, we can take on trouble. There's another small increase where we are a part of the regional SWAT team now. I have a SWAT team, which in essence, it saves a lot of money. We used to have twelve guys doing, we have to train those twelve guys now twice a month. Now we have two on the regional teams, Scambury, Bertie, Old Town, and Richfield. So there is some fees that they start to charge to build up for equipment and training. So let me see that in there. And everything else, we see some ups and downs, some increases in cost. But at the same time, we're able to save money in other areas. I just feel like the power DMS is an example. We used to have a system that used to do field tracking. But now we can use that power DMS, so there's a slight increase there. But we saved money in another area within contract services. So I don't know if there's any question. I know there's a lot of things in contracted services. Any questions on contracted services? I'm going to go from the school's office.
Yours is the best, the best presentation so far tonight.
So the next biggest thing is capital. As you know, when you guys last year asked for the four vehicles, we usually ask for four vehicles as rotation. We ended up knocking it down to two last year in the process. So there's only two in the operating budget last year. However, we did get a third one out of CNR. And we did not come back to the fourth one. We're on the border one that really needed that fourth one right now. To the point it's reached 100,000 miles. And it's near the end of its life. But that's that one of the K-9 cars. You see some of the, a little bit additional money within that. Because one of them is a K-9 car. It's a 2017. It's had about 97,000 miles on it right now as we speak. This time next year, it'll probably have about 120,000. That's just my, I don't know. We've been through this many times. But 100,000 on a police car is like having 300, 400,000 mile regular car as well. So you see a huge increase here, but it's really the same thing that we asked for last year. So again, I don't know if there's any questions in that area.
With the full-size Tahoe, have you saw better wear in that? It was supposed to be a four V8 motor. Are we going to get more time out of that, or are they going to be gone in two, three years?
So, so far, so good. You know, obviously, they haven't gotten up there in that 80, 90,000 mile range. But the last two or three years now, actually, I brought invoices, just as an example. It's not more of our cars, it's more of the medic cars that kind of falls underneath us. We probably kept this car one year to now. It hit 100,000 miles last year. And in August of last year, we had to replace the transmission. $7,000. In November of last year, we had to replace the whole 9,000. So just to give you an idea, once these cars hit that threshold, this is what starts happening. We've had very poor luck with the Fords lately. I think we've replaced three or four engines in the last, maybe, three or four years, which is unheard of. The Chevy still has that bigger V8 motor. It's a 5.7. It's been around forever. They seem to be more durable. Are they perfect? No. They burn a little bit of oil. But if you have to put a quart of oil on an engine once a month, I don't think that's the end of the world. Brakes squeak when you replace the brakes. But so far, they've been more durable. And the service has been by far worse than the Chevy, mobile Chevy dealership. Things over backwards for us, where the Ford dealership will make us wait three weeks before they even look at our car. So, yeah, and the other thing I'd just like to bring up in the Chairman of the Police Commission always likes to remind me, the money that we bring in from the extra duty jobs. Last year, we brought in a calendar, we brought in $93,000 just from using the cars on the extra duty jobs.
Can you explain just to everybody so they understand where that reckoning is coming from?
Yeah, so what we, you see our officers out on the road directing traffic. Those are private companies that are hiring us. And when they hire us, they also want paid for police cars. I believe it'd be hourly right now, I think it's $27 an hour that we charge them. And we bring in revenue by using those cars on the extra duty. We use the older cars. We have older cars that are very strict orders, that we use older cars first. Sometimes the newer ones are out there because they need four, five, and a bag, and we have no other ones to give them. So, yeah, that's, you really see, in my, in, I see my budget, our budget, it's without the things that were not already supposed to be in there last year, would be about a 2% increase. But because we took those things out last year to provide the resources, it does look a little bit more than normal it would be. So I hope that kind of explains things. I'm not sure if anybody has any.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Under contracted services, so the software of the 24-hour monitoring, that it's broke out here, and I just want to confirm, it's $4,000 for that?
Yeah, I believe it's at $11,000. Oh, the $4,000.
It's the addition for the 24-hour surveillance or whatever. That's, that's the new. The other stuff is kind of was going to happen because we already had up the line. Thank you.
Not because it happens throughout hours. You have two items in your capital plan for '25, '26. Yep. So everybody hasn't flipped around. You have, it looks like you have speed signs for $20,000 and license plate readers for $25,000.
Yes.
So that's the only thing, and the police for the '25, '26 capital.
Usually, we don't talk about it because we can explain as much as possible if you are. So we do have currently one LPR that we've been using and has been very successful. However, we were looking to get two or three more of them. And we actually probably want to look to see what, there's two other towns running.
And there's the license plate reader. There's a lot of civilians here.
License plate reader. Very common down the highways all over the place. They have one up there, Harvey, that we put there to avoid larcenies.
These are all mounted units.
And it's already stopped many larcenies that have been on the target. So we're looking at getting more. And as far as the radar speed signs, the speed signs you see on different roads, it's been a big demand by citizens to get more speed signs. The good news, I know I have it in the capital for $20,000 or more, is we just got a grant to get some. So it might not be as much that we, they're in order, how many did we order? Five.
They're $5,000 each, is that?
They're, yeah, about four brand each.
Yeah, four thousand. And we were able to just to get $501 out of it. We got a grant for about $50,000. I think there is about four operations where that one is down. So we're trying to do more, because everybody, not everybody, a lot of people, wow, my books are always requesting. So, but we got a $50,000 speed enforcement grant, which will cover that, laser, radar units, and also to pay for overtime for two months to actually enforce.
I mean, those are on the capital, not the job rate, but.
Yeah, it's not, that's all, 100%, I'm mistaken, yeah. Diego, has any questions? All good?
And I'm going to say, I'm going to say thank you. I hear that you're getting a little bit of plaque from other towns because we're doing so well with our speeders. So thank you for that. Thank you for agreeing to the pilot program for the LPR. I think we're really, we're happy that's working.
The other thing I want to add to that, though, is starting to, so we have one certain brand. I found out a lot of the towns around us, they even stay here, use another brand. So we might want to look into the other brand. Because if we do, then we could actually share the information when you have access to their information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Chief. Thank you.
We do appreciate you coming out.
I made one request.
Sure.
Maybe I'm further to school that year.
Next up, we have the Board of Education. We'll start with the Council of 74.
Happy morning, St. Caregill.
As I said before, everyone, thank you for your patience. Normally, we try to do one meeting for all for the school board. But, you know, hopefully you see how easy Chief Wagner had it tonight. He usually drills pretty hard. Mr. Chairman, you just left it when you're ready. Mike working?
Yes, sir.
I'll wait till Dr. Carver answers the first. How's that better?
Jack.
Jack.
If I, if I projected on my, why?
Barry's got to go full screen. Jack, in the view, can you just go full screen?
Yes, I did the full.
He's proud, Derek.
Sorry.
So you should put the start of the slide joke so you don't get the sound effects. So I guess while we're waiting, I'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, the slideshow catches up with us. The slideshow is important because it tells the story of our budget. There we go. I'm Scott Clayton. I'm the Chair of the Board of Ed. It's been a development on the board since, I think, 2010. Through three superintendents, four if you count Jan Jordan when she was interim, pandemic, at least one recession that we know of. Lots of different board members, including some members of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. It's a labor of love being on the Board of Ed. I'm a graduate of Bethel Public Schools. So my brother, my sister, my brother-in-law, two of my four children, as Coach Grimes would call them, the youngers. I have a junior and a seventh grader. And I think I represent the last generation of Bethelites to go to center school. And I think some members of the crowd here as well. And I remember the time when there was a farm at the end of Rockwell Road and Walnut Hill, and when my backyard was Bud's Afternoon. And I always share that with the board and the members present, just to demonstrate that, you know, I have a vested interest in the quality of life of our school system to respect, you know, when I grew up as a kid in town. Next slide, there we go. Mission, ambition, mission of Bethel Public Schools. I think it's worth reading. Not everyone can see it from the back. Makes it important to remind everyone. The mission of Bethel Public Schools is to foster a culture of excellence and achievement accomplished through strong collaborative relationships and rigorous teaching and learning opportunities for all learners. Our graduates will be compassionate, skilled, and inquisitive individuals who take initiative in making positive contributions to society. So initially, when the budget was initially crafted, we had three big buckets of ideas that we were looking to implement. Maintain and possibly grow our programs, provide the same level of curriculum and extracurricular support, and provide services that we are mandated to do under state and federal law, which I think requires repeating programs that we are mandated to do under state and federal law. I've been on broken record on the 267-plus unfunded mandates that we have, you know, on the news times and social media and whatnot. And as you see shortly, we've had to make some changes to our budget. It's why that red X is crossed out there in the middle, which we'll get to momentarily. Not all doom and gloom. We have lots of celebrations here in Bethel. As I said, the slideshow tells the story. The photo taken here was last fall, I think it was the very end of August. Bethel Middle School staff were invited along with maybe four or five other school districts to the commissioner's press release for statewide achievement tests, the Smarter Balance Achievement Scores. Bethel Middle School students demonstrated the highest growth in the entire state of Connecticut in math. That's a big deal. Johnson School received a School of Distinction Award in achievement in language arts, English language arts, for all students' growth and the growth of what are called high-need students. High-need students are students who might be multilingual learners, students with disabilities, as well as students who are eligible for free reduced lunch, or any combination thereof. Go ahead, next slide. So another tremendous success story of Bethel. The Connecticut State Department of Education, every year, gives every public school in Connecticut what's called an accountability score. The score is based on standardized math and ELS, ELA assessment scores, scores in grades two through eight, science assessment in grades five, eight, and 11. scores in grades two through eight, science assessment in grades five, eight, and 11, the SAT, which is taken by all juniors, not just kids who want to go to college, other benchmarks like the PE fitness score, attendance rates, rates of graduation, and a few other categories. I think there's 15 factors. Bethel is on top, as you've seen in our district reference group. And that's quite an achievement. I think the number is an 83.3 accountability score. I believe the state goal is 75. Now, this DIRG list, I know that might be, I don't know, somewhat, it's not controversial, but an organization called State Finance Project redid the groupings and added some towns like Enfield, Croweville, and Coventry, as well as some of the regional schools. And even when you add those schools in, in the 2023 revision of the DIRG, we're still on top at 83.3. The next slide actually even tells a better story because these are the regional accountability scores, as I mentioned, that the State Department gives. The state average you see down there in green, Bethel is number two in our region compared to, I don't know, see Ridgefield, Brookfield, Easton, Region 15, Fairfield, Monroe, Redding, Newtown, Danbury. We're only outpaced by Region Nine, I think by like two tenths of a point. So, these are districts that demographically are much different than Bethel in terms of household income, home values, students who might be multilingual learners or qualify for free reduced lunch. So in comparison, in our DIRG, which we're on top, and in our region, we're number two, which, you know, banging on the door to number one. And that's a tremendous success of Bethel Public Schools over the last several years. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Carver to share our enrollment and.
We do have a lot to be proud of as a district. And I like to say, you know, people think that you can instantly change student outcomes within a couple of years. But it's really a long sustained process, and it supports and the right resources for our students that make the difference in why we've been able to make such significant growth over the last few years, especially post-COVID. So in terms of enrollment and demographics, I think some of you participated in, in December, a workshop that we did. We actually just engaged in a 10-year demographic study to project out a lot of people, and what seems like anecdotally internally, is that we've been getting more and more students as the town has grown. And that has been something that has occurred. I think from when I started here in Bethel in 2014, we're up about 400 to 500 students from when I started. But what you note from the demographic chart and what the, what the, what the study said, even with the growth, it does look like we are stabilizing, meaning that we're not expected to see big spikes in the next 10 years, even with all the new building. And they did, if anybody's interested, I believe it's on our website, they did an extensive analysis and looked at things like the new apartments that are coming on Route Six and all of the housing development. So that's good news, because I don't think we can handle any more students at this point. But if you look, and it's interesting, because when I started in Bethel Public Schools, and many of you who were on the boards and commissions at the time, I always talked about that bubble class, right? The bubble class that was kind of moving through. Well, they're actually seniors now. And you'll note, and I put like kind of a orange line that separates between the fifth grade and below, and then above, you see it, you see it, what I'm calling more of a normalization in terms of class sizes that we typically see. And we're not seeing those huge class sizes. I do want to point out an anomaly. Our current kindergarten class is very small, but it's not small necessarily because of students. The law changed in terms of the date of kindergarten. And so that's what caused that little dip in kindergarten for this year, which will eventually go into second grade. So enrollment is hopefully going to stabilize. But with that being said, and one of our biggest challenges, and I always like to introduce the slide, that we, in terms of students with disabilities, we're definitely under the state average. But we have in Bethel seen a tremendous increase in the number of students with disabilities. Therefore, our percentage has gone up, but it's proportional to what's going up in the state. I think what we've experienced, and when I started, I can distinctly remember in 2014, for several years, we had 333 students with disabilities for several years. And you'll note now that it's, we're up to almost 567. And that was the date that the slide was done. I'm sure that number is closer to 570, 580. So we've seen a significant increase. But it's not just that we've had more students with disabilities. And I think you know, we are legally obligated and morally required to provide services. So it's not about whether or not we should be providing services. It's just that we have to provide services, and there's a cost for that. So we've seen a big increase, which is a, which is a big driving factor within the budget. And what we're seeing that is interesting, and the term that we're seeing is we're, we have more students overall with disabilities. But we also have more students that are coming to the district with autism. And autism is a spectrum disorder, so it could be anybody from that's functioning and, you know, has a job and in society, to somebody that doesn't have communication skills and exhibits like behavioral disorders. We're seeing kids that are coming in with much more significant disabilities than we have ever in the past. And I know Mr. Ellis and I have had this conversation several times. Why is that? Why, why is that happening? And is it, I mean, I have to say, because I get this question all the time, so I will say it out loud, is that because we have good programs? And the answer is probably yes. You know, that people hear about our programs and that they know that our staff do amazing things with children. And so I'm sure at some level that those draw people into the community with students with severe disabilities. But if you look, this is just a chart that talks about eligibility and what's occurred with eligibility. Speed-wise, and I would say in Bethel too, post-COVID, we've seen more kids identified with disabilities. And if you look, the first column is how many, obviously the dates, then the number of students that were referred to special ed. And then the fourth, the third column is how many kids are actually found eligible, and then what is that percentage? So you want to see a high percentage of referrals actually become, or found eligible. That means that they're an appropriate referral to special ed. But we're, so we're seeing that, that we're seeing more students are being referred, and then we're also seeing an increase in parent referrals, which kind of indicates the categories of not falling eligible. But again, we're seeing trends that are mostly post-COVID. And then the interesting thing that we've also been experiencing over the past several summers is that we have students that moved to the district after the budget's passed that require significant resources. So this, this data just looks at students that moved from July 1st to October 1st. These are students that might need nursing services. They might need BCBA's or have intense medical needs, have very significant, like I said, autism. Where we've actually had to start classes after school, the whole class drops, where after school has started, again, that we did not budget for, that had just moved into the community. And then I always get the question, where are they moving from? So we put that data there for you. You know, a percentage is coming from Danbury. So most of them are coming from within Bethel. I'm sorry, within Bethel, within Connecticut. We do have a small percentage that have come from out of state. I think it's 16% that's come from out of state. But these are people that just moved to the community after the fact. Our outplacements, believe it or not, this is something that we continue to work on. I think for those of you that don't know, for students that we can't meet the needs of the child in the district, we have to look for an out-of-district placement. And there's two kinds of concerns with that. The one is the quality of services, educational services the child is getting and door needs. And then the second is, it's usually more fiscally efficient to actually have the child in the district. So Dr. Sapala and her team and all of our special ed teachers, we have greatly expanded the programs that we can offer for students in the district. Whether it's students with severe disabilities, autism, students that have behavioral disorders. We are offering across the continuum because it's more fiscally efficient. And we like to think that we also provide a higher quality of education for our students in their own communities. So we're seeing a little bit of decrease, but we also have to anticipate because we do have every year, you know, it could be anywhere from two to five students that might at the course of the year need an outplacement. And just to give the public a sense of what that means, for every student that we outplace, it's about an average of $168,000 between tuition and transportation costs. So it's a significant expense to the district when we can't educate them in district. We've seen a growth in our multilingual learners. So if you look, again, starting, I think when I started, I think we had about 80 multilingual learners. Now we have 266 as of October 1st, and I'm sure that number is higher today. And why is that important? Because those students need extra support and services. They need additional support in reading, literacy, language acquisition, and really all of their subject areas to ensure that they're growing at the same levels. So not only the numbers have grown, but the percentage has grown over time. Our free and reduced lunch is up slightly too. So you saw a little dip during COVID, but it's up to 32%, which is trending above where it has been in the past. Again, there, that's important data because it tells us that typically, not all the time, but those students need extra support, especially in literacy development.
Okay, so additional pieces of data that tell a story. This is our per people expenditure. The state has a formula which divides up how much money we spend per student. You can see regionally, we are next to last, next to Danbury, sixteen, Danbury and Monroe, the amount of money each district spends per student. Just to pose that with slide number five or six, and you'll see, you'll see a story. Go ahead, next slide. This is the per people expenditure for our reference group. Again, when comparing with the slide, I'm starting with the districts in the Connecticut School of Finance project, it's a negligible difference. We are also down towards the bottom of our DIRG. Again, compared to what we spend per student and what our achievement is, fair to say that we do quite a lot with not much. Go ahead, next slide. So it might be a funny metaphor, but the metaphor, the perfect storm. Basically, any situation where a concurrence or a confluence of factors come together, all with one big giant negative outcome. There's a couple of different buckets that Dr. Carver's going to talk us through, which why we call this, this budget sort of a perfect storm set of situations.
I used the metaphor in my presentation to the board because I feel like a lot of times in a storm, you have no control over things that are happening. And for us, what really made this budget challenging is that we're putting before you now. The three major drivers of the budget are three things. Health insurance, contractual obligations, and special ed. I put on the side unfunded mandates and loss of state revenue because those are also influencing where we are today also. I just want to quickly talk about health insurance. We're going to show you the numbers in a minute. You're going to see that that is the area with the biggest increase in our budget. We were quoted that 33% increase over last year, and it was really due to high claims, history over the past two years, I would say, of high claims. And, you know, we tried to mitigate it. We were here a couple of years ago, I don't know if you remember, but we were here a couple of years ago, and I was saying, and it wasn't even anywhere near as significant as it is this time. And we went out to bid, remember that? And we went out to bid, and we were able to go onto a high deductible health plan, and we saved significant amount of money for that budget year, and actually for the subsequent budget year. If we hadn't made that switch, it would have cost the taxpayers about $2.5 million more over the past several years if we hadn't, if we hadn't done that change. So we thought, let's try it again. We're going to go out to bid and see what the, and the results are. We did that, we had three bids that came in. Two of them were higher than United Healthcare. So we got a bid from Anthem and Cigna. They actually came out higher based on our claim history, which is at about 143% than what United Healthcare was proposing. We even went back and looked to see if the Connecticut State Partnership Plan, which the town is on, would be more economical than, than sticking with our current plan. The answer is, it might be. We're, we're waiting to get some updates in the next week or so about where the partnership plan is coming out. I think they're going to have their final, if I'm not wrong, right?
Yeah, so the partnership plan, the next update is supposed to be their final renewal rate is due first week of March or January.
We're also looking for a final renewal for United to make the comparisons to see where we can get the most cost savings. The second is contractual obligations. I've said this, and I will stand behind it. We negotiate our contracts in good faith. We, Mr. Ellis was part of it this year with our teachers, which is our largest bargaining unit. You know, we believe that to stay competitive, there are state shortages of teachers across the state of Connecticut. And to maintain a staff, you have to compensate them at a, at a manner that they deserve. And so, you know, so that's one of the influences. And then the third influence, I kind of talked a little bit about, which is just special education. We have more kids with more needs and that require more services. Again, we pride ourselves in what we do for those children. But it, but it is, it does come with a cost. And then at the same time, and we'll talk later on another slide, we've also lost what's called excess cost reimbursement from the state significantly. It's, it's the worst I've seen in my 32 years as an educator in the state of Connecticut, although there's a little hope. Or we hope there's a little hope. So that's, that's also put that together too. So we went through already three layers of reductions, even to get to this point. I'm sorry, you guys can't see that. Can you hear me?
No, no.
All right, I'm going to use my big teacher voice. I feel like there's feedback. So we've already made reductions to get to our point in the budget here. And I think it's important for people to understand that. If we maintain our current program services exactly as is, the actual increase would have been 10.48. That's, and most of that is in health insurance. And we'll, we'll show you that in a second. So after I presented, so I did some reductions. When I say I, my administrative team did some reductions even before we went to the board with our first presentation to the board. So those reductions were about $356,000. This, and in that, we've lost three, three teaching positions. And we'll, we'll explain that in a second. Then the budget went to the board, they made some reductions, which we'll talk about in a second, to get us kind of where we are now. But where we are now presenting to you now, I just need you to know, is a loss of 12 physicians in our district. Okay? So I'm going to, so I'm going to talk about what we cut to get, and then Mr. Clayton's going to talk about what they cut the board to get to, get to the, not, whatever, 8.45%. So what we did, when, when I, before I presented to the board is, and I'm going to say out loud, and I've said this at all the meetings, but I think it's important for the public to hear yet again. Nobody wants to do any of this. None of this is good for kids, not good for the staff. But when you have to make hard decisions, you look at areas where it's going to be least impactful. And so that's what we did when we made it the first round of cuts. So what we, what we did was we moved our preschool circle of friends to a half-day model. So that caused a reduction of two full-time special ed teachers. Again, we want to be in full-day preschool. There's not one person on my staff that believes anything differently, but it is not a mandated full-day program. So we knew we had to take some reductions, and we moved it to a half-day. We had a vacant special ed teacher that we eliminated. We went through all of our line items to make any types of cuts that we could in all of our supply lines. We zeroed out our tutoring line, our technology line. We took some reductions in dues and fees. You know, I even gave up some things that I've been part of in my 14 years of my board. And my 11 years as superintendent, I'm adding years to my, my thing. And some in salary to reduce costs. We flatlined our tutor line, which could impact some intervention services. And then we went to like curriculum and textbooks. These are all areas that, although I would argue that the preschool does affect kids in a very significant way, but they were areas that we felt we could come into the board.
So going back to when we, the recession, I think it was like '08, '09, this is probably the most difficult budget year that we've had to go through as a board. But looking at the landscape and knowing the demographic of the town and considering that, you know, nearly a 10-point something, actually it was a 9.83% increase after Dr. Carver made some cuts, the board had to make some hard decisions. after Dr. Carver made some cuts, uh, the board had to make some hard decisions between passing on what we thought was a fiscally responsible budget, um, for the board of finance for consideration for, uh, the whole town, which certainly was not easy, uh, not an easy, easy, uh, motion to make as, as board chair. Uh, but you, you can see, uh, in what some of those reductions, uh, were. Uh, one in particular I'll note, uh, was the elimination of, of any new positions. Uh, there was a recommendation from the administration that an additional school psychologist was, was necessary, uh, for the reasons that you heard about increases in, uh, students with disabilities, uh, for, uh, evaluations. Uh, we didn't think that was the appropriate thing to do at this time, so we, you know, removed, uh, the adding of any additional, uh, FTEs. Also, uh, worked, uh, with the administration in, in changes, uh, to assessment schedules. So like, you know, it's just a mandate, not mandate, that's called the NWBA. Or just not gonna do that anymore. We have another, uh, measure of academic progress, uh, that the administrative, administration will use to evaluate, uh, student progress. Uh, we looked at reducing, uh, fifth grade section from ten sections down to nine. Uh, and, you know, a big one there down at the bottom, administrative, uh, furlough days, uh, the administrative union, you know, I believe agreed to give back three days, four, four days, uh, which saves us about an additional fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so we are just north of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the board, uh, boards reduced. It, it was unanimous. Uh, and, uh, in our, in our deliberations, when we spent, um, I think I only missed one of the, the sessions, uh, but the board, uh, probably asked anywhere in the neighborhood of a hundred different questions, uh, of the administration. They're all on public record and you can look them all. We got really into the weeds. Uh, and, and sure as Dr. Carver said, uh, the line items are about all zeros when you, when you go from, from each, uh, each category to the budget.
I'm gonna send you some information tomorrow, but there's a link to the memo that kind of talks in a little more depth about what the reductions were. But the total, uh, this, this resulted, I said there was twelve total reductions in staff. This is, this is nine of the twelve.
Thank you for clarifying, Dr. Carver. Um, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, you, this is a summary of the, the big paper that you have. Um, and what you're gonna note here is almost, almost the whole increase is in insurance. Five point one four percent is in our health insurance, and that is the most significant driver of this budget. If you took that out or even had to add a nominal increase, we would be nowhere close to where we are now, and that is what's driving this budget. Um, and that's why, you know, we called it a perfect storm because it's something that's out of our control, that we're, you know, we've tried every trick that we can to reduce those costs and it's just not, there's, we're not finding any relief in that. So the contractual salaries is just a smaller increase, um, in special education. And then we cut all other lines, all other spending lines, so that it was actually negative. So.
And then I'll say that we're really trying to make any reductions as far away from the individual classroom level as, as possible. As strange as that might seem, that, that's really what we tried to do. Um, not all doom and gloom here. Uh, we did, uh, we expect to receive an increase in education cost sharing. Uh, that's funny that the state of Connecticut gives to individual towns that might just not go to the board of education. So I think we get somewhere north of ten million dollars. If there's an increase of one point three million dollars that the, the town will receive, uh, in education cost sharing, that just goes on to the bottom line, which will offset the mill rate, which would further bring the percentage of increase, uh, down, uh, by adding that extra one point three million.
Hey Brad, can you just tell us what we got last year? And I know there's new projections.
Yeah, yeah, right. So the, when we set the budget mill rate last year, the projection for ECS was eight million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, because that's what we were being told. After we set our budget, the state kindly cut that number by two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
It's on my, it's on another slide.
So the, the net effect, you'll see, I guess, coming up, is the increase we're projecting is one point one six million.
So, uh, excess cost has been another, uh, thorn in my side. My regional superintendents say that I go to the Capitol with my hat out because it's been a passionate mind that the state should be funding this at higher rates. Um, and so the, the term's a little bit different because this week we found out, and I don't know if the Senate voted on today, but, um, that the, uh, that there was a forty million, forty million dollar increase at the state level in excess funding costs, which could help us in, in our budget deficit this year. It will help us get through the year without possibly going into the unexpendance funds account because that's where we're going now, uh, because we got such a significant cut. Um, yes. Education, yes. So it's reimbursement for costs of students that, um, are high, high-need special education students. So it's four point five percent of the per people expenditure. So if we, I'm sorry, four and a half, four and a half times, that's right, our per people expenditure. So Dr. Sappala, like, we have to get to about eighty. Yeah, so we have to spend eighty thousand as a district, and let's say the student costs a hundred thousand. They don't usually, it's usually more, but for, for sake of math here. Um, the state is supposed to reimburse us the twenty thousand when we reach the four and a half times the amount. But what's happened over time, so we submitted one point five million dollars in expenses of students that met the threshold, okay? We're supposed to get the balance between that, um, but what happens every year is they cap the grant. And they, they cap the grant based on how much revenue that they have to, to, to support all of the communities and the towns. So, um, this was the lowest I'd ever seen. It was at sixty-two percent reimbursement. That was what the cap was set. What we found out in the last couple of days, and that's here, is that if they, if they voted tonight and the governor signs it, they're gonna add forty million dollars to the excess cost grant, which will redistribute to the towns, which could mean that we get about two hundred thousand dollars more this year. Um, but they haven't addressed the future years. I just wanna caution you, they would have to put at least a hundred million dollars into this grant, the state would, to actually fund it at a hundred percent. So the forty, the forty million dollars was helpful and it, it kind of, I mean, I, I know I can just probably speak frankly infuriatingly when the governor, uh, proposed his budget because he said, oh yeah, we're gonna put forty million dollars in excess cost. That's not gonna do much, people. It's, it is lawful. We need, we, we need a hundred percent. We need to be fully funded. And there's still time to write your legislators, anybody in the audience, um, I've said it out numerous times because they do listen when they hear a loud voice from the community. So this, this is an area that's always in flux, and we did budget at seventy-three point six. So we budgeted, um, a little bit conservatively, but because we, we knew that, um, we, we were hopeful that we would get a little bit more than we have in the past.
Uh, just so you, the, uh, latest update is the Senate passed it. Lamont's threatening to veto it.
Yeah, you're right. We should be writing, we should be writing the governor. Uh, but, uh, so it is to, so to Brad's point, as he was saying earlier, if you look at the increase in spend, the increase in spending is clearly eight point four percent, four or five percent. Most of that is in health insurance. Um, if you look at the, the net difference between what the adjusted ECS amount is based on the way Bethel budgeted last year, it's about two point one two, which would give, uh, if you combine those two, six point three three. Um, I will say that with the increase in revenue from EC, uh, excess, uh, ECS, um, that we are required to submit a plan to the state. It's, it's a little different. In the past, it's just come as revenue to the district. With this increase, not for the whole ten million dollars, but for the difference in the increase, we actually have to submit a plan to the state that has to be approved by the state on how we're using that money. So it is a little bit different.
Is it, is it being recorded? How about that? So this is the history of, of percentages since, uh, two thousand and ten, eleven. Uh, typically we've been on the lower side. I think we're like two point nine something percent last year, six-year average, four point two percent, five-year average, four point two four percent. So this is, uh, something that is not typical, uh, for a proposal, uh, and we're kind of on that, uh, you know, back what we said before about the, uh, perfect storm, uh, situation. So this is an atypical budget year, but in order for us to maintain what, you know, our, our, our status and our achievement, uh, we're, we're putting forth the budget that we need to save the kids.
So, I mean, I have to be clear, you know, we've already cut twelve staff. Our administrators are already furloughing days. We've already made significant amounts of reductions. If we go further into that, it's just going to go further into, uh, our programs for students. And, and to be frank, I'm worried about our student achievement because a lot of people have been curbed in our students, um, would, could potentially be impacted by further reductions. Um, we have to look at non-mandated curriculum programs and after-school activities at this point when we're thinking about it. I showed this slide at my presentation to the board of that, um, because I think it's real in terms of what we're talking about. If we have to make, we can only cut textbooks so far, we don't, we can only, uh, look at non-mandated programs that have minimal impact to kids. They might be layoffs, to be clear. But, uh, but additional reductions will impact student programs. And this is not an all-inclusive role, but I always get the question, what's gonna happen if we, if we have to do any type of reductions? I mean, we're definitely looking at larger class size. We're looking at our, our, um, kindergarten care educators because they're, again, our special education care educators are mandated, uh, legally to help the students. Those are non-mandated programs. We're looking at things like our library media centers, um, you know, elimination of music programs, art programs, um, athletics. All of those things kind of are on the table now for, for, for conversation in terms of where we have to go next as we look to reduce any type of staff. So this is not like, all of these things are going to happen. I wanna be clear. But I do wanna be clear, and I said this before. Any reductions, we're gonna have to have very serious discussions about what's there that's coming up and, and how it's gonna impact that. I don't believe in doing any types of, any one programs, you know, if we have to make reductions, we were trying to do that when they were thinking about it and what's the least impacted kids. We will continue to do that. But there's, we run weak. I mean, I think there's a lot of people in the world that, that criticize us in a, for it, but you, you see the numbers and how we compare to other communities. When you're run weak, there's not a lot of where to places to go. And that's, that's my reality, and it keeps me up at night, uh, because I care a lot about our children and I care a lot about the staff. Um, and I care a lot about the programs that we bring and make this an excellent community. So I, I, I just wanted to share that. And even in terms of district-wise, we're talking about nurses, we're talking about custodians, we're talking about IT staff. I showed a slide in my presentation. If, if, if we eliminated thirty-three students, uh, three, thirty-three staff members, it's about one point six million dollars. So, uh, because there's not, there's nowhere else to go. There's nowhere else to go. Um, and that being said, we're open to questions. I like, and I'm not down.
You and I are done. Does anyone have any questions?
Are you breaking up?
Doctor, thank you, and I appreciate all the talk on special ed because I think as a community, we have a responsibility to take care of kids with special needs, right? I can't even imagine, and I think that a few of the support candidates have that. That being said, how did you, um, that's a thirty-eight or almost thirty-nine percent increase in line numbers. Is that just because you anticipate a higher enrollment or did costs go up across the month?
Um, it's a combination of rates. It's a combination of tuition, tuition. So we get a, uh, tuition increases anywhere from, I think, uh, Dr. Sappala, who did that, I presented, yeah, increase. So that line number is very big. Also, special education transportation. So if we have to send a student, let's say, into, um, trouble or, um, not a tough, because they're an out-of-sense replacement, sometimes the transportation cost is just as expensive as the tuition. Anybody's looking for made money, I, I really highly consider special education transportation. So both kind of major drivers of, of the increase we're on.
That's what I was, that was curious, okay. So, so does that mean, because we talked about that possibly it was a hundred and sixty round numbers per child that needs to be placed out, right? So that could be three new children that are gonna be outsourced?
Or it could be a child that is turned around that.
Oh, that's no longer a stay in.
So both things happen.
And then I think that you answered my question, uh, the transportation is in that, is built in that number for the children that get outsourced. What's that? Oh, the special ed transportation.
Yes, exactly.
Doctor talked about that, that was part of fiber turn.
Yeah.
I didn't see it when I was.
Fifty-one hundred, right, that one?
Yes, 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 yeah.
Fifty-one hundred? Oh, there, there. And that's for the kids that are, are outsourced. Okay, so that number absorbs that transportation for the kids. And currently, how many are outsourced, do you think?
Yeah, I had to point you out on the slide, but it does change on a daily basis.
Thank you.
So the budget current is presented, includes the current level of support for the routine programs like DAN and CAR.
Yes, we, we did change our elementary schedule, uh, so that kids will have integrated services, but they, they, but there will be reductions in staff. So I wanna be clear.
Right, so what you were saying on the slide up there is if you have to cut further.
That's correct. Athletics, music, any of those. They, they will be, uh.
What line items are represented in marching band, for example?
So science, uh, which is part of salary. Um, transportation, but this is kind of a part of, yeah, nation, uh, supplies and, yeah, there are different lists. Use the fees. Use the fees, so we have to pay a fee for the state, and, and.
That, so that's under fees.
It's in a lot of different spots.
Okay. Okay, it's not an easy question to answer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, right. So. Right, right. You, you cover the buses and tickets competitions, you cover the Trump rentals and J卡, I say R because I'm one of the four. Um, and the, um, half-day structures.
Right, right. And we, for each card, I'm seeing for any of, and, and our CDK parts of their program, so it's, it's, there's a variety of different, uh, pieces not.
Right, right.
So I wanna be clear. I know people wanna talk about, we, we, it could be in any area.
Right, they're all, they're all equivalent, like.
Correct.
Dr. Carver, um, how much do employees currently pay towards their, do they have a percent?
They do. So each bargaining unit is, and it's contractually negotiated, has a percentage of premium healthcare. And with our high deductible health plan, they also pay, uh, if they're on a individual plan, they pay a thousand dollars towards deductible. And if they're on a family, it's two thousand, and the board pays the, the other piece to that. So it really is like one point two, twenty-one. Yes. Right.
This may be to Dr. Carver answering that. The one point two million dollar increase ECS, if something's dear to you, generals, where do you think the chances are of actually getting that money full, full-fund?
Actually think we are. Um, so last year when we budgeted the eight point eight eight million, um, or eight point eight eight one, um, when the governor announced his budget, he had us at the eight-six whatever number that we actually got. So they changed some of the format, format, which helped us. Um, and the governor, when he released his budget, has the ten million oh forty-one. Um, so we're taking that as a good sign and obviously we're watching it like a hawk to see if we get any information. They also passed a law, nothing, they're gonna follow the law, they'll pass the law that says that they, that, because municipalities need to be able to industry their rent. So the laws, the new laws said that by December, they didn't really tell us till January, that they, they have to tell us what it's going to be because you're in a budget cycle process, the board year. So I actually don't think any of that happened there. But it was in the governor's budget, um, there's a lot of support around it, so I don't think it's going to be.
But what happened when they finally in the states set their budget last year, they didn't actually decrease the cloud of expending for the ECS, they reallocated it. So Bethel lost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the reallocation, which I think it went. Which I think it went, the cities went up and towns went down.
And to the fair, they 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 redid the formula. And they finally caught up with like the whole women, the percentage of students that are multiplying. The percentage of students that are. It's a weighted formula. And it always lags like several years behind and now that they're collecting data more frequently, I think they're making adjustments in more real time. Which is helpful on the.
Uh, it's a concern mine budgeting the ten million dollar number, Bob. Um, it's part of our mill rate calculation. But it's like it's also, we don't want to keep it flat and then have the mill rate be higher, so it's. It's hard right now, but having it having to be in the budget, the governor's budget. I'm never confident with anything in the state, but I'm a little bit more confident that last year he said we were getting eight six six, we got eight six six. This year he's saying we're gonna get the ten million forty one. I'm fairly confident.
Well, theoretically, we should be able to say it by that. Because they're supposed to release any adjustments. But your point. But they said we are looking at the first round of the summer and people were saying we actually. I've never known a state to be on time with anything. Um, but I think you, I mean, to be honest, you you won't know until the end of the session. Yeah, but do I think in this, I think we all think that it's it's very likely to happen. I think you have more to worry, we have more to worry about with that cost.
Which, you have any idea what the standards is?
Um, I have learned that the Alliance districts have had to do it in the past and they haven't shared that with us yet. Um, I can easily get it in other areas, other areas. I don't think it's a big issue for councils, it just needs, it has to show that you're using that additional funding for evidence based practice in support of schools.
So what's evidence based?
Research. So, um, things like, uh, like math. It could be anything related to schools that is research based that we've implemented. If it's dressed, say we're using part of the money to fund our social workers. So we have, we have some pretty deep lives to be. I'm not worried about that at all.
I'm worried about the ten million dollars, bud.
Uh, Dr. Carter, just a real quick question, obviously we want. But one thing that came up when I was looking through online and looking through the workshop, I did see a place where you were talking about an increased landscape. That you guys are gonna have eighty seven thousand dollar projected increase.
Well, that's in the next section. I think that question. That is in the next section.
The other, the other question I had, uh, would the kindergarten change? So next year we expect that it's different.
Well, we'll expect it from the current kindergarten class, so we expect that next year it's in a level. So that, uh, because the 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 date is September first as a change. So we we're anticipating that the class will probably be a little over two hundred, which is what it typically is. I mean, sometimes you get situations where it's long and you have a bunch of new people in the community or. Uh, the rentals that that period of time. And you've gotten fifteen or twenty kids that have added on at that point. But we usually get a good sense of, uh, when we're doing kindergarten registration, where we're gonna project to.
Can I answer? So so the kindergarten class this year is small because they changed the date, so so next year is is. It's gonna be larger only because there's a percentage that.
Just a question about circle friends. You know, my daughter went through that and she needed to go, so she was qualified with early testing, how just explain how that works.
So circle friends is a is a is a preschool program. Um, so we are required to provide services to students and facilities when they turn the age of three. We actually have to have a meeting. Yes, yes. Ninety days before the child turns three. Uh, and then we have to have a program that's for them to meet their needs at that point. Um, we're also required by the state to have what's called a. Like fifty fifty ratio with timing on disabled peers. So we open it up to community members, um, and we hope that about ninety percent of the kids attend and those students do pay tuition. To to attend our program, um, will attend it. And then, um, the issue that we had last year, we talked about last year, is because of the change in date. We had an ad won with the amount of kids that missed September first cutoff date. And so we had to have a significant more sessions because they moved in next year preschool. Yeah, um, so it's, um, so yes, it's for students and facilities, we've had acting programs since I've been here, we have whole day programs. Honestly, ideally, it should be a whole day program, especially for four year olds. Uh, and I think that even at state level, they're talking about like a concept of universal preschool. Uh, because there is a lot of research at the state's practice. Where that shows that if you provide quality preschool services, it actually not only reduces special ed, it reduces even preschools like like beyond. Uh, school, so there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of value to it. Another thing that happened over the last couple of years, so the state changed to be that we have to serve kids who are never. So, um, it used to be we had to serve kids in facilities till the twenty first birthday. And it, and then it changed to the twenty first birthday through the year. And then they changed it to twenty two. And now it's twenty two through the year. So we, you'll see an increase in job coach because we have a, we have a community partnership from, I'm actually here in the state. And we're a credible, uh, credible group of kids that help out town in a lot of ways. Um, and we we had to span that program because we have to convince now until they're. Through the school year, uh, of twenty two. So it's been a significant, the year it was implemented, it lost about four hundred seventy five. To implement for that.
I had one more question, um, you mentioned on the first slides about legislative mandates. I mean, I know what we talked about earlier this year was free lunch for everybody. Are there any other mandates that you should be worried about as more second than the.
Well, I I I think you know. There's, there's a lot. Um, I am not opposed to getting children free free breakfast and lunch, I want to say that out loud. But I think I, in the memo that I sent to the legislature, that would probably cost us an additional million dollars a year. Um, just to provide that that additional program. And we we do provide free lunch to kids that need it. It's the, it's, it's, it's for everyone else. We had it during COVID, it was wonderful, it was subsidized.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, and it was wonderful to have, uh, but that's the example, there's there's a lot all the time. So I just keep an eye on it and I write testimony, I wrote testimony on three bills today. Um, and they just come.
Doctor Carter, uh, you mentioned that a possible lead. Like your, some of the class sizes are now and what the capacity.
Yeah, so, um, the the board event has, um. Uh, the board has class set aside guidelines typically like to keep kindergarten kindergarten first light classes around close twenty one. Um, and that's what they currently follow, you know, with nothing changes. Uh, but if you look at, um, if you look at second grade, we're looking at average class size is twenty two. We've had a section that's secondary classes is twenty five, twenty six, the schmoo is way too big. Um, obviously, as kids get older, um, then class size is important to some people. But it it doesn't have the same effects because kids are older and they and they, uh, can do a lot of things independently. But, um, it it depends on how many sections. I mean, we have middle school classes that are between twenty five and twenty seven now. And so I can't imagine it over and the high school has classes the same. So, um, you know, that's. So, um, on up to. Without, it was, uh.
Another question I have. Um, I know, when I was on the board event, reading articles. There were companies out there that tracked. Uh, the alumni schools. Uh, what's the situation? I saw that. I was happy to give they were tracking it. But I'm curious. How many of our high school graduates? You want to graduate for your.
So the need on my website, Chris, I know.
So I'm, I'm. Our students, uh, seventy nine percent of our students. Uh, wanting to go to a two year college is the first. We had, retention rate has been really high. Interestingly, it's been in the ninety, you know, ninety percent plus. Now, the way they, if they're now, um, looks at is it's a six year graduation rate. So it's on average, probably around sixty percent of kids. Um, graduating in that four to six year range, as many of us know. A lot of kids are. On those tiers, um, we're also seeing, you know. We're also seeing a number of students who are, uh. In trade and going to. But we're still averaging, you know, after the pandemic, we're reporting the money is dipped for us. Down like seventy three percent and then just just last year jumped right back up again. So right, I'm saying it's fifty nine percent of students go to college. And sixty percent of that's anyone, you know, graduating like for the six year range. Um, those, you know, most of them definitely is typically the second year, which, you know, if you're going to a two year, uh, college or anything, so it's great. Um, and national average is much lower than that, I mean, home graduation rate is like four to six.
We've heard that there's a website, sorry, little tongue called, I will send to the board tomorrow, it's called. And, um, they actually track it. How we get the data from colleges, universities and what power it is for us through the system. Like you should really look at it. Um, because it has some good information. So it's very nice.
Need a question, Ashley? Back to the, uh, update. The impact of local for the whole day to happen. You know, uh, I remember again, the other word, how beneficial was going to. How do you see, uh, financially in the future of it being going to happen?
Well, we we already did that and we had to eliminate some positions to.
Well, same way. Uh, if that, as if you know, the full day. There are less kids to be fed. Because they they require less, uh, resources in the future. We think the product effect would be by decreasing it, increasing the need for resources.
I, that's a great question and it's hard to anticipate and I'm certainly. Uh, because we have to consider. I mean, we've done it before. When we had to, we had to like, uh, and guard back and forth between two. Um, and I, my guess is it would probably vary by student and whether they need. So you might have one student and to be fair, if the student has complex needs and they want to see that turn up. And you see that over there, um, but if a child requires services where they need to be there all day. They develop a plan for that student. Regardless of the fact that you have a half a day still in that life, yeah, okay. So they're getting the services that they need, it's just that the general law is happening.
One over four sixty?
Sure.
So there we go. Uh, so we're searching pairs to facility spending, um. And this model here shows that we are spending an increase in overtime. We have, um, added increase to spend, find, just to have things that's in fact to maintain our schools. Um, we also have a piece of something like that that you have to do, you know. Uh, this is a typical letter sent in this week, how to like and appreciate our. And I I just glad I generate that, we do appreciate the great. But we're very good to your word. When do you, it's like, they get pumped to you and we've been able to. We do appreciate that, because that's kind of history has been, uh, over. Uh, so I'll, I'll just bottom line here, so our request here is for separate, the twenty five dollars is a two hundred thousand dollar. And this is, again, this is kind of reflective of what we actually spend. And we actually, uh, we know we're really not. Um, so with under supplies and contractors, we did recommend some reductions in supply counts to help offset increases that we need. In contract funding, we're going to find an increase there in our.
Say it again? I don't think we have.
Yeah, I didn't realize that you didn't have. All like that. I'm sorry.
How much was the increase in HVAC?
Preventative agents, um, is a five thousand dollars, six hundred eighty.
Five thousand?
Yes, that's the main, it's not on track, that does not tie any repairs, that's either material.
But you identified two hundred thousand increase in that HVAC line, is that was just for maintenance?
Yes.
For all the schools?
Yes, for all the schools. Yes, and the older schools that have more repairs. And this, is this the, the maintenance contracts there? You'll get a copy of, I think it's a landscaping question.
They just started out because I, I wasn't thinking where it was, but I had a kind of a moment when I, it says you had an additional eighty seven thousand.
So that's the.
Okay, so not having learned my line, I was like, it says additional, additional was for before this. Alright, so did you have a conversation?
We did, so. We, we had a conversation about, so right now we have that, we have that, uh. We have the link, we have the contract because there's always been a room between the board and the town. About having, uh, the parking wreck is most of our campus. Um, there's some areas like around the perimeter of the campus, the iron, uh, the molten, um, tree hairs. You know, that aren't part of where parking wrecks, uh, maintains those services. That falls under this contract, I think it's possible. Well, this is in here, this is one percent from March. Right, through the year. And the most expensive we have to buy, so we can say wrong. Right.
And what's the increase of that amount of the service coverage?
The full stuff is, oh, the overall increase in that line is 70,000. The multiple level is 30,000. Uh, did we talk about, about pointing to Dan and Nick, did we talk about, um, consolidating landscaping in general to more over to parking back here? Was that part? Yeah. I, I agree. All that is the same. Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I'm very glad for this year, but I think the other issue is that a lot of our subsidies, long buildings, they're college students. And so lots are already growing and, you know. So I think that was a piece of it too.
I'm just a big fan of shared resources.
I, I understand.
So what was the?
All right.
Um, 24%.
So 74%.
17,000 dollars, yes. It's 20 most of them on the budget, it's not 21%. That number from last year, but they're on COVID. They're much. It's a, it's a, it's a challenge. It's challenging, yes. Yeah.
The total.
That's right.
With the, with the contract service. For the whole. Everything is perfect.
Everything's perfect. All right. The last.
And you'll get a copy in.
Yes, you will. I acknowledge that.
Brad's.
No, it's not Brad's, it's all Star's. I, I want, I want to take like. And these are some pros and cons to care of the community. Water fountain, a light pole, uh, light pole. I am black contractors. Uh, my colleagues, uh, who are, uh, just, uh, uh, include, uh, uh, volunteers who, uh, want, uh, middle school.
Well, I can't say no to the water.
I, I know.
I was happy to see that.
So.
So the other thing, so for 25, 26, the board event, your budget capital plan has the, uh, the roof, right, that's on here. So right now, since the high school HVAC was a fruit project, but it's still on here till it's done. Um, you have the middle school floor repair for $100,000, middle there in high school HVAC control repairs or something.
Yeah, and I, we had a conversation, uh, when we had that joint meeting of all the schools too. I mean, I think there's a figure issue there, uh, that we have to get to the bottom of these. That was a number, because I don't, Ben, but you can see, I mean, Mr. Ellis, I don't, there's some cracks in the actual floor under the, uh.
Correction slide.
Yeah. And we have to figure out why it's happening. Because if we make a repair, we want to make sure that it is, because there have been some areas of the, in the. Um, and then there's a larger question about the middle school and general, the roof and, uh, the HVAC systems, which are, uh, I think are almost all collapsed now. Um, you've got to do that in more than that, from my opinion.
Did we get any learn on all those cooling lines? You know, the Tyler or, or so I don't. Inspect the bed.
No, we have, there's a, there's a, the capital plan, just do the inspection in the future.
Okay, but how much damage was done and, you know, Tyler was going to get somebody there to look and see what, you know, what kind of shape it was in?
That's inspection.
That's, so there hasn't been a guy in there to look?
There has, someone to fix the leak, I don't know if they're going to be able to do the doctors' call thing.
No, 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 no. He went through and he was going to look and you're going to have somebody going to, if I remember.
Right, well, the repairs were made for the immediate issues. And then what we said was we need this larger inspection, so that we can, so we can make better decisions around what the issues. It's also now legislated, underlines on the mandate, is, um, that you have to do 20% of your schools over a minor period. You have to have a pretty thorough HVAC inspection. So it's required, any of that is by law. So we just thought it made sense that middle school is the best place for it because they're having, was the, we adjusted it to the high school because of the HVAC project. Uh, it's, that's how you threw money into that.
Yeah, then, just as I mentioned it before, the high school roof repair is on the capital plan for 27, 28. But we had a joint meeting to talk about having it on the referendum. That's the state funding piece.
Yes.
Did you get, you were going to get someone in to tell me?
No, I, I explained to Dan and Brad, uh, that. Uh, we have, we have a high level quote, we have a floor, we also have some, um, information about other, uh, school systems or face. We say, so we have, um, a range for dollars in the square foot, um, range, which, I don't know. Um, I think it's around 60 yards per square foot, we have a quote behind that. Um, that's what, yeah, so. 60, 60, I don't know.
Square, so we're, maybe 6,000 a square.
Square.
Square. Are you? That's, that's.
Okay. So based on the research we've done with other projects, you know, initial, uh, I'm sure previously is in that ballpark. Um, and most of the, it's all part of our time markers, we lost more of the position as well.
Is that because of prevailing rate?
Uh, we definitely have to.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, that's your demo and replace rate?
Yes, yes.
60,000 or 40,000?
Another question?
No. Jen, I think you mentioned that you. Study on the capital.
You mentioned the placeholder on the capital plan for study.
Uh, it's the, it's the middle school each time is such a.
Then they're 460 by the, you know, right here.
Oh, good, we don't have.
That's like.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, about the capital. I'm not sure.
But you, Jen, you're talking about the 460 capital piece or the capital capital piece?
I'm talking about the, the board event capital plan, I have 75,000 dollars. Number of middle school each time. Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's control repairs.
Okay.
That's, that's study on the actual.
Correct, correct, correct.
Are we, are we looking, we think you said control repair line, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, okay, yes.
Yeah, so it is on the capital plan that you're, not in the 460. It's, it's a HVAC control repairs, but that's the study.
Got it, all right.
I just entered the words.
And that's just the HVAC study.
Right.
Have you mentioned earlier about having, because we didn't talk about having the study with middle school construction floor?
We did.
I mean, we have removed.
No, I, I thought that was the way we left it was that you were going to, um, work with this board, work with the. And see if we could do some kind of engineering.
Do you sound a little bit, I'll make sure. Anybody have any other questions?
So I just did, just to make sure I heard right, so the 202,000 increase of the 460 mainly for maintenance all around the AC units of all of the building and stuff. Or a bit.
Yeah, it's all for major ones.
The 202, so, so the increase is all based around air conditioning repairs and maintenance. The majority of it. And then, but you would say, well, so I don't have an item, so, so that's 180,000 and there's, you know, 22,000 in middle repair. I know you had some water coolers and some smaller items, but.
I think the 202 is your total, I mean, your total budget.
Yeah.
That is not the game process. They had a line in, for an HVAC before that, right?
No, I know, but it's 202,000 more than this current year's.
That's not all HVAC.
Well, that's.
It sounds like it's hard to ask.
You showed a.
Why you don't have the down and bounce?
Doctor Carter.
Most of the, with also, uh, the.
Okay, so we're going to get that paid.
We will literally email.
But, but for tonight's purposes, most of it is based on the AC.
I got it.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Can you understand me? I'm getting it very sound.
Yeah.
You can always, uh, you know, pull in some part of the deliberation.
There's.
There are no questions on us, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, the point of the best presentation.